Now, we're going to move on to item D, which is our first public participation.
Vice Mayor, can we do the minutes?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. I've got all thrown off.
Thank you.
Oh, it's not on my agenda. If we could seek approval for the minutes of City Council November 5th, 2019, and November 12th, 2019.
Motion for approval.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those against say nay. Excellent. We're fine. A motion passes four to zero. Now, the first person to public participation. If you could approach the podium, state your name for the record. You'll have three minutes once the timer begins. And we already have our first participant.
Okay, Phyllis Robin Schefler. Talking about the permitting department, they are mired in inefficiency. The Palm Coast Permitting Department's budget is over $2,300,000. Permits are issued without verification from the contractor of what is stated is truthful. The application itself is so faulty in design, barely leaving room for the adequate description of a proposed work as required, and even a smaller space for the estimated value. The department also allows a surrogate to file the application, not requiring any proof of the legality of the notary to do so. How can a department of $2,300,000 in operational costs be so sloppy? When a permit is issued, is that where the responsibility ceases? The city's nonreaction to my particular issues as a taxpayer is tantamount to thumbing its nose at me and telling me that its regard for the contractor, to be honest or devious, takes precedence over the homeowner. The city appears to be letting the bad guys get away with duplicity, and I, the homeowner, is left out to cry and dry. A high school senior needs to validate his SAT scores in a college application. A would-be teacher must validate his credentials when applying for a job. A prospective enlistee in the military must validate his age. And when a person dies, as I know because my husband died in February, a death certificate must be filed at the courthouse to record his death on the rolls. But in our city, a contractor or his surrogate need only put down on the application, in my case, $2,200 instead of $23,500. And the job description says, "existing beam repair," instead of demolition and restoration of a second-story deck, like the doting parent who doesn't want to hear that his child has not been truthful. It seems as though the council and all parties involved with the contractor issues have adopted the same attitude. It matters not that the city has been short-changed due to insufficient filing fees paid. I have presented my remarks many times in the allotted three minutes for participation. The issue needs further exposure. This issue needs to be spread beyond my lone voice. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
My name is Celia Buglisi, and thank you for letting me take my three minutes. I'm bringing here something which I email to every councilman and our mayor, because I know that you're trying, along with the administration, to preserve our quality of life. This is something that maybe people have not been addressed in the past few years, but we started addressing now. This is the description of Orange County, where Orlando sits. It is, they have a speed hump program that protects the residential roads. They are under the same Florida statues that we have, because it's Florida statue. And they have created a very good speed hump program on which requires 66 percent of only the affected residents on a given residential road to request through petition, sign petition to the county for installation of speed humps. That is presented in meetings by the county, is taken up by the administration, and if it's approved after having meetings with those requesting affected residential neighbors, the speed humps are put up. But with this, which I consider is a fair thing for all, that is created a small, the cost of the installation is then, just the cost of the installation, is then paid by those residents that have requested the speed humps. I see the same issue in Arizona when I visit, and residential roads have speed humps, and all our over there, the shopping malls have speed humps. The things that I see around here, with people speeding, with people on their motorbikes making e-ball carnival jumps up in the, up in the high end, like Florida Park Drive and other streets, the violation of construction tracks on other streets that have signs of no construction, and the speeds are incredible. I don't live in some of the streets, and I've seen them, and there is people that go with open mufflers that sound like explosions. I'm talking to my 70-year-old friend in front of his driveway, and he jumped, okay? There are things that are not being looked for our quality of life, and this is a good program that could be installed in Palm Coast's way. This is done by the county, not by the city, but I think we should look into something like this. That's why I sent a copy of this to all our council and mayor, and I'm going to leave this copy for Mr. Mark Morton. He's not here today, so I'm going to give it to him.
Absolutely. Thank you very much.
And anything that can do to improve our quality of life is until we can, Palm Coast is growing, and this growth is taking away our quality of life. That's all. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker. Okay, I see no additional speakers. I will close public comment. Phyllis, if I could instruct city management and city staff just to summarize the current state and report back to council on the current efforts and the ongoing pursuit of her situation, I would be appreciative, just so we have a level set on what's occurring. Celia, I'm sorry, I didn't, I don't believe I received that email, but looking at the pamphlet that you have sent, I'm certainly interested in evaluating what Orange County is doing. I'm sorry that I didn't receive your original email, but I will certainly review this, and I think it's very interesting, and thank you for bringing that up from other counties on what they're actually doing. That's approaching a problem and bringing a solution is very much appreciated, so thank you very much for doing research. Okay, moving on to item F is proclamations, and item F2 is a proclamation for Palm Coast Holiday Boat Parade Day, and this proclamation will be presented by Councilmember Cuff. All of those receiving the proclamation may approach the podium as well.
Whereas Palm Coast Yacht Club is proud to organize the annual Palm Coast Holiday Boat Parade, one of the area's major holiday events, and whereas the Palm Coast Yacht Club inaugurated the boat parade in 1983 and has been at its helm ever since, the club offers a wide variety of social and educational activities for boaters and non-boaters alike. The club was established in 1979, and whereas the parade is expected to exceed last year's record of more than 47 brightly lit and decorated boats, and is now generally considered the largest boat parade in central Florida, with hundreds of spectators expected to attend, Palm Coast Mayor Melissa Holland and Sheriff Rick Staley will once again serve as the parade's grand marshals, and whereas boaters and fans are invited to start making plans for this colorful and cherished event. The parade begins at 6:00 PM, departing from the Cimarron Basin, south of the intercoastal waterway, turning at Grand Haven gazebo back to the clubhouse waterway, and whereas the parade will be broadcast live by Cool FM 100.9, anchored by singer Linda Cole, known as Central Florida's First Lady of Song, David Ayers, the Vice President and General Manager of Flagler Broadcasting, and former mayor John Nettles. Okay, just checking. Also joining them on the air will be Ansley Page, Flagler Broadcasting's Florida Palm Coast High School media intern, and whereas the parade will be escorted by boats from the Flagler County Sheriff's Office, Towboats U.S., the Florida Fish and Wildlife Conservation Commission, and the Palm Coast Auxiliary of the U.S. Coast Guard, and whereas all residents and visitors are invited to celebrate the season with this community tradition, the 2019 Palm Coast Holiday Boat Parade. Award-winning Palm Coast-based photographer Lori Vetter Bowers will serve as the official photographer. Now, therefore be it proclaimed by the mayor and the city council of the City of Palm Coast, Florida, December 7th, 2019, is Palm Coast Holiday Boat Parade Day. Signed this 19th day of November, 2019, City of Palm Coast Vice Mayor Nicholas Klufus. And may I add that the parade is great, but the proclamation is almost as long as the parade is. Nevertheless, it is, it is a wonderful event, and I'm going to present this to whoever I'm supposed to present that to, and encourage everyone to turn out to see it.
Thank you. I just have a few remarks. I'm Sarah Yulas, Chair of the 37th Annual Palm Coast Holiday Boat Parade, and I thanks the Vice Mayor and to Mayor Holland and your staff and your, the city council for taking the time to recognize the parade, what it has become and what it means to the city. We should all be tremendously proud of what we believe to be the biggest in central Florida. I have heavily marketed the parade with specifically targeted boaters, including the Loopers, Marina Life Florida on the Water, AAA Boat USA, Visit Florida, Southern Living, and many more to bring attention to Palm Coast. Last year, we had viewers and boaters from many other states as far away as North Dakota who planned their vacations around the boat parade. And the tradition goes on, and we are on the books, and we hope even more attention will be given to us next year. We're very proud that Cool FM is broadcasting it live again, and that Ms. Linda Cole will be one of our broadcasters live from the waterfront park. Thank you so much for lending your beautiful voice to us. Thank you. And Lori Vetter Bowers, who does beautiful work as our photographer, will be on hand as well. And I'm also indebted to John Welsh of the Palm Coast Observer for generously giving us a deep discount for two full-page ads in the paper. Maybe you've seen the first one. And what is the parade? It's the boats. And two of our boaters are here, and I, the captains work so hard to make these boats so beautiful on our waters. So may I have you come up and introduce yourselves?
Jeff Skidama, Commissioner, Beverly Beach. Last year was our first year, but we enjoyed it very much, and we're coming back. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Jeremy Mayer. I am with Real Therapy for Heroes, where we take veterans out fishing at no cost to them. Last year was our first year, and we plan on being in this thing every year from here forward, and had a great time and great turnout. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. And so, all members of the city council and vice mayor, we thank you for your support and encouragement, and we see you on the water on December 7th. Thank you very much for this.
Yes, thank you very much. On behalf of Palm Coast, thank you. Excellent. Moving on to section G, it's ordinances, second read, and item G3 is an ordinance. Mr. Reichman, would you like to introduce it?
Certainly, Mr. Vice Mayor. This is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Palm Coast, Florida, amending Chapter 44 Traffic and Vehicles Code of Ordinances of the City of Palm Coast to create a new sec, excuse me, new Article 6 through, through traffic on residential streets, to regulate traffic in or on certain residential streets, designating certain streets as truck routes, and amending Section 2227 Schedule of Violations, Providing for Severability, Providing for Codification for Conflicts, and for an Effective Date. This is second reading. It's a legislative matter, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Excellent. Okay. Councilmembers, do we have any discussion or comment before I open it up for public comment? This is a second read.
Second read needs to be open to the public.
Yep.
As if there's any questions, I'm happy to address them. There have been no changes since first reading, but this is a public hearing.
Sure. Excellent. So we will open up item G3 for public participation. If anyone would like to comment on item G3, approach the podium. You'll have three minutes. Perfect.
I guess as is presented, has not been any changes since the first time that was addressed, right? Right?
That's correct.
Okay, no changes then. Thank you so very much. It really is going to help us. I hope it's enforced properly, so we feel a little safer and less accidents and a more beautiful Palm Coast overall. Thank you.
Excellent, and hopefully this satisfies that. Absolutely gives a little more weapons in the repertoire of enforcement to be able to maintain those things. Next speaker.
I didn't know you were going to grant me another three minutes.
Well, it has, it has to be on item G3. It has to be pertaining to item G3.
Oh, okay. All right. I didn't know.
No worries.
Mary Kay Hayward. I'm just curious as to how you've worked out the enforcement of this with the sheriff's office or with a FHP, and what is going to be the standard, if you will, for enforcement?
Understood. Excellent. Thank you. Next speaker. Okay, I see no additional speakers. I will close public comment. As far as enforcement, I know the city manager, Matt Morton, worked in conjunction with our sheriff to come to a conclusion on enforcement. I'm not 100% specific on the details that were flushed out of that meeting, but I do know that we are working in coordination with our sheriff to ensure that what we have in the ordinance is actually enforceable, and I'm sure that it will have modifications as far as patrol rates and enforcement rates, but this will give us a general basis to be able to do those type of things.
Mr. Vice Mayor, there's two categories of enforcement. One is fines, which of course is through code enforcement, and I'm sure there will be coordination, as the vice mayor indicated, with members of the code enforcement staff to go out there and, and take steps to enforce this ordinance. But just as importantly, if not more importantly, this ordinance recognizes that a violation of this could also be a violation of the Florida statutes, Section 316.074, and that will allow sheriff's deputy to enforce that provision of the Florida statutes as would be appropriate. So there's two different tools that will be available for the city and for the sheriff's department to go out and try to achieve the objectives of this ordinance.
Excellent. Thank you very much, Mr. Reichman. I will now bring it back to this council. I will entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against say nay. Motion passes four to zero. Moving on to item G4, which is also an ordinance. Mr. Reichman, would you like to introduce this one as well?
Certainly, Mr. Vice Mayor. This is a second reading of a quasi-judicial matter, and the title is, "An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Palm Coast, Florida, Amending and Restating the OARE Master Plan Development or MPD Development Agreement for Property Consisting of Approximately 1,013.36 More or Less Acres." This property is generally located south of State Road 100, north and west of Belterra Boulevard, and west of the Quail Hollow subdivision. This ordinance provides for an extension of the time limit in which to submit preliminary plots in Section 5.1, along with housekeeping amendments for consistency with, with the Land Development Code. This ordinance deletes outdated references, provides for legislative findings and intent. It repeals all conflicting ordinances and provides for severability and effective date. As this is quasi-judicial, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of the council, if there have been any ex parte communications since the first reading, those should be disclosed at this time.
I have had none. Councilmembers, has there been any ex parte communications?
No.
Not so ever.
Thank you, sir.
Absolutely. Okay. Bringing this item back to council, there were no changes from the first reading. Council, if you have any questions or concerns, do you want to speak to them before we open up for public comment? Okay, I will open up item G4 for public comment. If you would like to comment on item G4, feel free to approach the podium, state your name for the record, and you'll have three minutes once the timer begins.
Can you minimize? I want to get a little closer look at the map. George Mayo, Palm Coast. I'm curious as to where the ingresses and egresses will be for that development. Are there many, several, or how is it planned? You're just showing the plot of land there. Is there anything showing, be able to show me right now? Thank you.
No worries. Next speaker.
I just have one question, which is my concern with growth, and this question probably is for Mr. Adams, but I'm asking you, that's this potential redevelopment of this land, probably they're requesting that because they're going to sell it for housing. And is this housing, like the ones that are built all around here, going to be served by our sewer plant number one in Utility Drive? Is going to be any expansion of that plant? And what is the capacity? It's a concern that we have. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. Okay. Mr. Pappas, would you mind answering George's question regarding ingress and egress?
Yes, sir. Regarding the ingress and egress, based on the conceptual master plan that we have submitted to us right now, that's part of the approved master plan development, there are two points of ingress and egress for this property. One is the existing one that leads to Benton Village and, I think it's called Princeton Village now. The other one is another service road that would line up with Caris Trail.
Excellent. Thank you very much. And Richard, Mr. Adams, would, do you mind addressing Celia's question about the water treatment plants?
Sure. That particular area will, flows will go to wastewater treatment plant number one, capacity is 6.83 million gallons a day. Wastewater Plant Two is 2 million gallons a day, so total of 8.83. Our current flows are just under 7 million gallons a day, but we have already started the process to design our next expansion to wastewater plant number two.
Yeah, Richard was just waiting for a waste treatment plant question. Excellent. Thank you very much. I believe that addresses the concerns of both speakers. With that being said, I will bring it back to this council and entertain a motion.
A motion.
Excellent. We have a motion as a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against say nay. The motion passes four to zero. Moving on to section H, Resolutions. Item H5 is a resolution, 2019, approving an option and ground lease agreement with Diamond Towers v. LLC for construction of a telecommunications tower at Palm Coast Frieda Zamba Pool F-111. Morning, Mr. Cooley.
Good morning. So, go ahead.
Absolutely. Do you have a, would you like to speak about this item?
I was just going to say, this is part of the approved, council-approved master plan for expanding the wireless infrastructure, and this plan has been thoroughly already vetted out, and this is the location that everybody putting together has found is the best location for this tower, and it will help actually expand coverage of this area and invite more carriers to jump on the tower and provide a better level of service to our citizens.
Excellent. Council, do we have any questions for staff before I open it up for public comment? Okay. If anyone would like to speak on item H5, please approach the podium, state your name for the record, and you will have three minutes once the timer begins.
I've seen these towers in Arizona where I live, and one day there was one among a full amount of palm trees on a shopping center, and my son says, "You know what is that, ma'am? Do you notice any, any difference in between those palm trees?" I said, "No." He says, "That one is a cellular tower." So I think we could think when we put these towers here to ask the developer to at least make them less obvious, because that was my experience over there. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Louis McCarthy, Palm Coast. It would be helpful if, when you come up talking about a tower, to show it on the screen. This way, we know what it would look like. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. Okay, I see no additional speakers. I will close public comment. Celia, the issue disguising these type of towers, these are going to be 150-foot, 150-foot monopoles, so they're going to be a single monopole construction, and the 150-foot towers are difficult to disguise as trees, and it's not necessarily effective. There are 100-foot monopoles that you can kind of blend in, but this is going to be right next to the Frieda Zamba Pool. Unfortunately, I don't think that's going to be an applicable situation here, but I do appreciate the comment, and I've seen those type of things up north, but this one's going to be a tall 150-foot monopole that we're not going to be able to apply that to. I also concur, we could have had a picture up here for the Frieda Zamba Pool, but cellphone tower, it's a big monopole, so one of the ones similar, I guess if you would drive past the high school, that'd be an example of a monopole, right, Mr. Cooley? Cool. Excellent. Okay. Council, do we have any discussion, comments, concerns? I will bring it back to this council for a motion.
I'll make that motion. Second.
All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against say nay. Motion passes four to zero. I will now recess our city council meeting and call the CRA board meeting to order. Is there any formal process that I have to do for that, Kate?
You just have to...
Right, do I have to bang the gavel?
No, I think you're good.
All right. I know what you want.
You want to do it, though.
All right, yeah, well, yeah, all right.
Give person a little power and see what happens. All of a sudden, they got to hit, hit some wood.
Exactly right. So item I6 is a resolution, 2019, approving a master services agreement with Be My App Corporation. And Mr. Cooley and Mr. Shadi, is there anything that we'll be presenting today or speaking on the item?
Well, no, other than what we presented last week when we were, this is for a Tech Beach Hackathon event, which is already bid, the funds have already been pre-approved through the SR100 funding pool, and this is just a hiring of a management firm to help us execute on that plan and make sure the event goes off without hitch and is quickly and in time as possible.
Excellent. Okay, thank you very much. With that being said, council, do we have any questions for public comment? No? Okay, I will open item I6 up for public comment. You can approach the podium, state your name for the record, and you'll have three minutes. Anyone? Okay, no? I will close public comment on item I6. I will bring it back to this council to entertain a motion.
Approval. I'll second it.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against say nay. Motion passes four to zero. Thank you, gentlemen. I will now adjourn the CRA board meeting and reconvene our city council meeting. Item number K is the consent agenda. If anyone would like to speak on any consent agenda item, you're allowed to do so before we motion for approval. You'll have three minutes to approach the podium, state your name for the record, and which item you have a question on, and address your item.
Morning.
Yes, George Mayo, Palm Coast. Item number 12 concerning, it looks like outsourcing of emergency pep tanks, removal or fixing or whatever. I've had that problem once before, and the city was right on it immediately. My neighbors have had, you know, similar circumstances, and the city was on it immediately. I'd like to know if we're going to have any guarantees, though we have to call Joe's Plumbing, and they may be there tomorrow, or how is this going to work if we're going to have the same level of service that we do right now with the city.
Excellent. Thank you. Next speaker. Okay, before addressing the...
Vice Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry, Celia.
Yes, I'm sorry. I, I, oh, this, I didn't quite understand, because I was in the back, when it was spoken about the master service agreement with BMYAPP Corporation. What is that type of services?
I'm sorry, what, what number item?
I mean, the number seven. I couldn't, I couldn't hear what it was being said upfront.
Oh, sure.
And so I was wondering, what is this, this master service agreement with BMYAP Corporation, APP?
Understood. Perfect. Thank you. Next speaker. I will speak to item number seven. Celia, Be My App is a management firm that is going to be facilitating services for a hackathon that the city is going to be holding here. That's the management company. The corporation name is pronounced Be My App, so it's a play on words for handheld applications, basically cellphone apps. And then item number 12, from my understanding, the pep tank replacement agreement that we're entering here is for emergency contingency, and it's $149 per pump, but Mr. Adams, if you would mind speaking a little bit to that?
Yes, it's actually just a bid to purchase pumps on an emergency basis, and it's the same supplier that we currently get our pumps from. We had to change the contract so it fit into the FEMA requirement, so it's just for the purchase of any replacement pumps that occur during an emergency, and yes, nothing will change as far as the resident and the city continues to own and operate the pep systems.
Excellent. Thank you. With that being said, that addresses the concerns of the consent agenda. I will bring it back to this council for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make that motion. Second.
In favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those against say nay. Motion passes four to zero. The consent agenda is approved. Moving on to item L, Organizational Items. Number 17 is a select vice mayor for 2019, 2020. I'm not certain how we want to move forward with this. Gentlemen, I have had the honor of being the vice mayor for the previous year, however we want to hold, hold this item. Bob, I'm sorry, Mr. Cuff, Mr. Quino, or Mr. Howell, do you have any comment on the item or...
Yes, I do. Actually...
Actually, I just met you a little over a year ago, and unfortunately, we don't talk much because we can't, especially if it has to do with city business. But watching you taking over the reins, okay, over the last few months, I'm in agreeance that we should have you prolong, if you don't mind, have you prolong, once again, it's my opinion, have you prolong your, you know, job another year.
Understood.
So that's a nomination for Vice Mayor Clufus?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr.?
And to speak, and to speak to the motion, since we do traditionally rotate the vice mayor's term in one-year increments, I'll give Mr. Clufus a chance to escape if he really wants to by invoking precedent, but I certainly have nothing to add to either Eddie or Jack's second.
Thank you, gentlemen, very much.
If you're willing to do it.
I feel like I'm just starting to get in the groove, and I greatly appreciate that. It's a privilege to be serving him with you guys.
It starts looking like a rut in about another three months.
Fair, understood.
Just saying, no.
I'll make that motion to have you stay for another year if you in agreeance with it.
I would be humbled and honored, yeah. Is there a second?
I think Jack's second.
I'll sort of, I'll say.
Thank you.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against say nay. All right, thank you guys very much. I'm humbled and honored to serve.
Congratulations, sir.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that.
Or as we used to say as children, tag, you're it.
Ha, thank you. Well, thank you very much, that's very humbling. Moving on, item L 18, Liaison Appointments to Various Service Organizations for Fiscal Year 2018 and 2019. Mr. Adams or Kate, how would you like to facilitate this?
Normally, if somebody wants to, usually you guys stay on the, you council members stay on the same committees outside of City Hall, so if anybody wants to change, you can suggest that, but if not, we'll just stick with what you have.
Does anyone have any?
I'm fine with doing what I'm doing.
Excellent. Mr. Cuff, Mr. Brinkino?
I'll swap you the TPO for the St. John's River Water Management District, Eddie. No, just kidding, no.
Great, it's not good.
How did you avoid becoming vice mayor? That's my only number. If that's the consensus, I'm fine with it.
Excellent, okay, then I believe we will continue with our liaison appointments from fiscal year 2017-2018 to 2018-2019.
Do we need to motion that now?
It should be a formal, thank you.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against say nay. The motion passes four to zero. Okay, we will now move on to item M, which is public participation. The remainder of public comment is limited to three minutes. Once you approach the podium, if you have not spoken yet, you may approach the podium, state your name for the record, and your three-minute clock will begin.
Yes, George Mayo, Palm Coast. Situation last Thursday, and this is a situation I have brought up about a year and a half ago to the city. I was coming south on Town Center Boulevard, going by the Imagine School, and a person in front of me stopped because everybody, it was 2:45 in the afternoon, everybody was picking up their kids. Person in front of me stopped and blocked the lane. As I looked, and ahead of me, there are eight, nine cars going north that were all stopped waiting to pick up the kids, blocking the road. Cars behind them started, crossed, crossed the double yellow line because they didn't want to wait for Johnny to pick up because they had business to take care of, so they are now driving on the wrong side of the road. Should somebody going southbound do the same thing, you're liable for a head-on collision. I brought this up, the mayor said, the manager would look into it, contact the sheriff. Well, the situation is still happening. Since this is on public record, I am letting the city know that this situation is still occurring. You can let the Imagine School know that this situation is still occurring. You can let the school board know that this situation is still occurring. The road is being blocked access for north and southbound traffic, and I'm sure everybody's kid is more important than the other kids. The school, I don't know the total layout, but I know they have two gates, entrance and egress. Then everybody's using the northbound one. As I drove by, the southbound gate was locked, and it has arrows for in and out. There were cars parked in there, there were buses parked in there. I can see no reason why they cannot do something about the traffic pattern to keep that road open. If an emergency vehicle were to come down there and had to get through, and somebody's going around the outside traffic on the wrong side of the road, you're going to have a serious situation. I hope it's looked into, so if anything happens, let this be known that everybody cannot say, gee, I didn't know this was happening. So I put most of the blame, onus on the Imagine School, and it's up to them to find a solution. The other thing I'd like to talk about is, I live off Zebula, on Ziegler Place, the street across from me on the cul-de-sac Zenger, a new house is being built in there. And as you clear the lot, and sometimes lots are wet, and/or you're bringing truckloads of fill-in to do the necessary construction. On this situation, the trucks were dragging out tons and tons of mud, inches deep. Luckily, I'm on the opposite side. I would like to see the city have some kind of ordinance resolution requiring builders, at the end of the day, to clean this up, because that mud stayed there for days, it was tracked out onto Zebula, everybody's drying through it. When it dried up, it became just one big dust storm through the whole area. So I think the builders should be responsibility for cleaning the mess up at a daily basis. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. I see no additional speakers. I will close public participation. Addressing the first concern of Mr. Mayos, I would appreciate if I could instruct city staff to ensure that the Imagine School is notified, and also the school board and our sheriff, that this is a legitimate concern and that we are concerned about it, and just guaranteeing that they are at least aware of the situation. That is absolutely right. Everyone's kid is always more important than the other person's, but it's a serious situation, and now that you have told us, if someone were to be injured, I would not want to be in a nobody said anything type situation. So I appreciate you bringing that back up, and if we can refresh our communications to those entities, that would be awesome. And I see Mr. DiLorenzo has sat down. I believe you're going to address the second concern.
No, I'm going to concern the first concern.
Okay, fair, okay.
We actually met with the principal and vice principal of the Imagine School yesterday to discuss their traffic concerns. It's not just for, you know, what it looks like now, because there's increased development here in Town Center, so we wanted to talk to them about an overall plan. We are going to have our drone team go out in a few weeks and look at what their traffic pattern looks like now at their peak times, and then the Town Center developer has offered up their traffic engineer to help them redesign their drop-off and pickup to make sure we can get the cars off of Town Center Boulevard best we can.
Excellent, well, look at that, very appropriate answer. Thank you very much, Mr. DiLorenzo. Unless you have an answer for number two, would you like to answer about the dirt on the road?
Yeah, we have a contractor news flash that we can send out a reminder that, you know, it's important for you to keep your job sites clean, and that includes the roadways that access the job sites, and we'll have a conversation with code enforcement to look out for those issues as well.
Excellent, thank you very much, I greatly appreciate that. I think that will suffice. Okay, excellent. That concludes public participation. I will move on to item N, Discussion by City Council of Matters Not on the Agenda. Council member Cuff.
I have nothing for this meeting, Vice Mayor.
Excellent, council member Brinkino.
I just want to add that, you know, once most of these issues on the agenda come up, and you ask if we have any comments, the reason why, and at least I'm talking about myself, is that we don't speak much about them, it's because we already spoke about it lently, at length, on the workshops. So people here and at home don't feel that we are not interested in these things. We are showing interest in, but just it's spilling, you know, things that we don't have to speak about. It's just so people don't think that we don't care about these issues. We do care about it, but we discussed them already at length. Thank you.
Thank you. Council member Howell.
Yeah, I've been working with our attorney here, and as you know, I'm on the opioid task force in the public service, and I am working on creating an ordinance on the prohibition of selling vaping materials to kids under 18. And I'm doing some additional research to give me the numbers and the concerns of the educators, you know, these kids in the junior high school or for that, well, not the junior high school, but the seventh, sixth grades and up, you know, they're into this stuff, and we've seen on the news reports that there's elements inside the vaping material that, you know, some of it is arsenic in some case, or cyanide, or THC, and we know that it coats the lungs when this stuff becomes a liquid, and we need to at least have something from our standpoint saying, hey, enough is enough of this stuff, it's dangerous. And so you'll be seeing this as we format this and get it ready to go. The other thing is that I'm working with the attorney here to possibly sue the manufacturers of opioids. Orlando just did this. We know that there's a lot of expense that goes into the police investigating these things and getting all of our ducks in a row. The coroner has mentioned that we've had a lot of suicides, some of it was opioid-related, and then there's just bad overdoses, and we've seen what fentanyl can do, just brushing against the powder there. We saw that one deputy suffer a little bit, so I'm trying to nail this thing down, and I'll get back to you once we're ready to staff it, and you can take a look at it, and hopefully, you know, we can take the lead on this. But we got to do something, it's out of control, totally out of control, too many innocent people are dying. And finally, I'm getting smarter. I just completed my second Harvard course in creating a public value, so I'm kind of getting there where I can know some stuff. Not a whole bunch, I don't want to scare people, but I found that course very, very interesting, and is a good tool that I can work with you guys and our mayor on, and we can do the very best for the people we serve.
Excellent, well, thank you very much, and thank you for your continued efforts in working with our lawyer, and I think you're spot on with the vaping epidemic accessibility and availability is very much a critical component to all of that. And it is a frightening thing to see, because these younger kids are becoming nicotine addicts, and then the opioid epidemic is a whole nother issue, but I'm thankful that you're working on efforts for that. And congratulations on completing your course, that's excellent.
Corner to go.
Perfect, 66% of the way there, excellent. The only thing I would like to add is, yesterday I had the privilege of speaking to Boy Scouts about citizenship, and I wanted to thank Michael Shadi, he was there as backup, but also just as my communications director, that was fantastic. These young kids are honestly engaged, and they were, tons of parents were super interested in the Citizens Academy program, and it was really great to see these five-year-old kids saying, how could I be a better part of my community? It was really inspiring. It's great to see youth who are actively involved. Congrats on the Freedom Fest. I'm hopeful that maybe next year we can bring a little bit warmer weather, it's a little windy and cold, but that happens. And that's all I have for today's city council. I'm going to move on to item O, which is Discussion by City Attorney of Matters Not on the Agenda. Mr. Reichman.
Nothing to report, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Awesome. And Discussion by City Manager of Matters Not on the Agenda.
I have only one item. Remind everybody with the upcoming holidays, Thanksgiving Day is on Thursday, so Thursday's trash will be pushed to Friday, as well as any recycling that's picked up on Thursday, and Friday will be pushed to Saturday. And then Christmas and New Year's Day are both on a Wednesday, so lawn debris for those Wednesdays will actually be pushed to Saturdays.
Excellent, and I have one more item that I would like to add in the record. The following council meetings have been canceled because of our holiday schedule. November 26th council meeting, December 3rd, and December 31st. Those council meetings have been canceled.